Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, September 23rd. 2025 on Tom Water Works session. I think all council members are present. So with that, we will jump right into the agenda. So the first item is the community center design and citing. And Todd, are you going to be presenting in place of Chuck?
Sure. We have Keith Hayes and Gloria Wilkerson from Barker Rink or CCAT. And they'll be leading our discussion slideshow tonight. And then they answer any questions you might have along the way. I can as well, but they are prepared. We went over the presentation earlier and it's ready to go. So they're prepared to.
All right.
Let's do it. We're ready, ladies. All right, well, first off, thanks for having us again. So I'm Corey Wilkerson from Barker Rink or CCAT. You can just call us BRS. I'm project manager for this and I'm who is the principal on the project. And then also working with Todd and his Chuck Denny capacity. And then we also have Jim Mall. Who's working with the city for the Wash Dot ITG. So some of this is going to be new for you all. Lisa and the mayor have already seen some of this stuff, but we're going to kind of tag team the presentation. So I'll get it started and I'll pass it off to Keith. And then he'll toss it back to me and then it'll be an open discussion with everybody here.
I have a question. Where is BRS from?
We're based in Denver. We have an office in Dallas. Our focus is community recreation and aquatic centers. We were across three. We've done a handful of buildings here in the Northwest. Now have a project in construction in Redmond, Oregon.
All right, so the agenda today, we kind of have this all labeled as consider confirmed commit. This is a process that BRS does. We call it the three Cs. Consider, so we're bringing to kind of a reconciliation schedule to get the workshops for the feasibility study back kind of on the calendar. So we can finish the study itself. Then we're also going to go through and confirm some glossary of terms just to describe the different types of recreation centers that are out there. Keith is going to go through a day in the life of a multi-generational rec center. We're going to look at some floor plan adjacencies. We are going to look at a plan for a standalone senior center. And then with those plans, we do have kind of estimated budgets. We'll talk to a little bit left. The biggest thing that we are asking for is a commitment to one of the proposed sites. And then at the end of the presentation, we'll kind of just outline the next steps that we need to take BRS and the city of Tom Water to kind of get this back on track. So we're going to ask you to consider the reconciliation schedule. Where we got to is we did the virtual presentation with city council in January of this year. So that's been a hot minute. We are here today, September 23rd, doing another city council presentation. And what we need to do is still schedule our last two workshops, our final presentation to the city council and then also our final document delivery. What we are looking at is rescheduling workshop four for sometime in November. Workshop six sometime in December. And then that does say 131. So the end of January, looking to deliver a final feasibility study to the city of Tom Water and to the city council to look at to read and.
Can I ask a quick question? So workshop number four, is that a council? Are the two workshops council workshops or is workshop number four a public workshop?
This is our, so we are done with the public workshops. We need to complete that. So we got all the public input that we needed for a program for communities or recreations here in Tom Water. What workshop four and workshop five are entitled is we start getting into more of the design of the center. So we develop design threads which are terms that are defined by BRS, but tied back to Tom Water. And it's supposed to kind of be our direction or someone else's direction when it gets to a full service project that the center needs to be Tom Water as a community. So these words describe Tom Water and those affect how we design the actual building. So we take the words implemented into architecture, present something that is unique to Tom Water and says, this is us. This is Top Water as a community.
I think the two workshops would be with a steering committee and staff. And then a presentation to council virtually, just so you could see where we're going in terms of really citing the building and more of a finalized plan.
Okay.
Going in the funding phase.
And then I'm going to toss this over to Keith. So we kind of just want to go over gloss, over a glossary of terms, but just to describe kind of the lingo that we use and to kind of get everybody aligned with what we're tracking to.
Yeah, people quite often talk about, for example, community center and what that means. It's really in our, in our language, it's a broader community focused space. It's probably what we call a dry building. So definitely a community space, not unlike this council chamber or multi-purpose space. Classrooms, it might have a gym or some fitness spaces. It's probably on the smaller size side from 5,000 to 3,000 square feet. And it might be with an aquatic center or with an outdoor aquatic center perhaps. We're seeing comprehensive regional or recreation centers. It's more regional, 50,000 square feet or larger. Generally, we start saying we want to have about eight to 12 acres. So we can have adequate buildable land to cite this sort of building on. It's going to be have more of everything. It's going to start to introduce fitness, aquatics, gymnasiums, community spaces, all of these pieces. And the idea is that it's really more in a multi-generational demographic. That's distinct from a senior center. We hear a lot about senior centers or active adult centers. These are really focused at the upper age group, probably 50 and up. And they tend to be smaller. They max out at about 10 or 20,000 square feet. There are definitely more community rooms. Dining is a big thing. The key to this sort of space is really the hours of operation, that they're really 7:30, 8 o'clock till 1:30 or 2 o'clock. And that's five days a week. And then everyone leaves and we shut the whole down.
When you say 1:30, 2 o'clock, are we talking PM?
Yeah, yeah. So it's, 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 you know, four, five, six hours a day, maybe. I think we're, we're aiming with this project, what we've heard from, from our public meetings and what we do broadly across the country are more of a multi-generational recreation center. And we'll talk about this in our day of the life illustrations where it's got spaces for, for seniors, for youth, for young kids, for adults. It's going to have a variety of spaces. It's going to have athletic spaces and community spaces, classrooms. It can still have the kitchen. You can spill serve food out of it, but it's really more community wellness. And we're really trying to serve all ages and abilities. So talking in terms of the program and what I tried to do here was develop a schedule. And so if you, you look on the, we've got the time of day, starting with the early morning, 5:00 AM, going down to 11:30 PM on the left there. And then these are a series of different spaces that we've identified for the building on the, on the top in the columns. And so this is the schedule, for example, for a passive space like the lobby, senior lounge, child watch, classroom, a multi-purpose room, the community room. There's outdoor patio people identified, kitchen, an aerobics or dance classroom, a group exercise classroom, as opposed to just a general open weight and fitness space. Indoor turf and then behind all our online participants over here, we got the gymnasium space. And it's color coded, so seniors are in the tan color. Youth are in the purple. Young families are in the light blue. All ages are in green and community uses are in yellow. So you can see the, the tan space, the senior space is really over here on the left side in the senior lounge, classroom, multi-purpose community room. And they're really not going much past 1:30. They use some of that, we could use the aerobics dance room. We could expand into the open gym activities for pickleball. And I classified that as green because it's really all ages. But, but that use stops about noon. On the other hand, you're starting to see families or the all ages are using all throughout the day. In fact, we could even turn some of these senior spaces into family gathering spaces. We did a project, we just opened a year ago in Midland, Michigan. And the comment that really struck me there was families came to public meeting and said, you know, we're going all day long. We want a place in the lobby where we can get a pizza and have a family dinner. That really spoke to my heart. So to think that this might be a space where that family that's going all day long, they get the pizza, have a family gathering here in the lobby and then move on to their different activities throughout the building, whether it might be a scout event in the multi-purpose room or the classroom. It could be a basketball game or indoor soccer, something like that elsewhere. The idea that you've got space for youth, so when the seniors leave, now we got kids coming out of school. So we might have homework help. We're seeing esports emerging. That's a rather complex topic in the parks recreation world, but we're seeing scholarships and things like that. I was just in a facility in Ohio last week at a big esports room. The idea of having youth footsall, youth, youth basketball and volleyball leagues, those start to happen in the, in the gymnasium. We did, I want, I do want to clarify with the gymnasium. There was a comment, we were talking about basketball and basketball is just a way that we describe the gyms. But these are multi-sport spaces and they're suitable for basketball, pickleball. They'll have striping for volleyball. We could, depending upon your community, I wouldn't go past three different kinds of striping. We could do footsall or indoor soccer. And you can move large aerobics classes in there. We can provide adequate exiting. So if you wanted to have an indoor job fair or a large community event inside, those can host that as well. So it's really a multi-purpose space, but it's definitely tuned towards athletic.
And I see Councilmember Dahlma also.
Oh, please.
Thank you, Mayor. One thing I dig this, right? The one thing I am seeing post pandemic, especially with our seniors, is caregiving times and their sleep schedules. So I have a handful of seniors who actually have been requesting more afternoon classes because they're not able to sleep well in the evening because of their caregiving duties or their own health. So when they finally get ready or get a break and have someone watch their partner, there's no classes. So I would love, like, as we move forward, that flexibility though, to not just segregate demographics. I love the yellow and also know that needs are changing and evolving. So some seniors are night owls. Some seniors like to come in the afternoon. But I dig what you're presenting.
Absolutely. And the point is that we're really trying to provide a facility. It's a framework of spaces and it's for the community to use and evolve the use of. And, and that use is going to change over the course of the day. And so it's, I hate to linger on the notion of a traditional senior center that's more of an eight to five operation. But we're really trying to describe a facility that this is open from 5:30, 6:00 in the morning. It might not shut down until 10:00 at night. The uses might change in a room, even as you can see here from hour to hour and maybe even day to day. It's going to run 8:30 to 10:00 at night, Monday through Friday. It's probably going to open up again at six on, on Saturday morning. It might run until 10:00 Saturday night. It might open at noon on Sunday and run until nine or 10:00 on Sunday. So this is really a seven day a week operation. And the, the objective is to appeal to the broader Tom Water and Southstown community and not just any one demographic or group of folks. Yeah, Corey.
No, and just because Keith started with, this is kind of just what we created to show you that these spaces can be flexed. So this isn't saying that if the center is built, like all the senior programming has to happen in the, in the morning. This is kind of what council member Dahloff was stating is that this is just, it can be at any time. It's just to show that these spaces can be used if the population that's mainly using them or not there. So true flex spaces.
Just to describe some of the spaces and give you some pictures so you can get a sense of the quality of the finishes in the spaces. I think most of these are, are facilities around the country. But the senior lounge, you know, is space more, I'd call it a living room space. It would have a combination of seating, tables for games or eating or coffee, places to do puzzles, hang out, converse. Pleasant finishes, durable finishes, good acoustics so you can talk. Classroom, multi-purpose room, these could have carpet or a resilient floor. The ability to do either exercise or classroom, we could sit around tables, we could do activities. If it had a resilient floor, we could, we can add a sink and start to do some arts in it. I don't know that I'd want to go to all the way to clay necessarily, but certainly painting classes, we see any sorts of spaces. Quite often there's a small counter, so you could do a coffee service or pastries, that sort of thing. Community room, these are larger spaces. They might be some divided into two or three spaces, so there's some flexibility. You could have a meeting such as this one in that space, a public meeting. You could have an anniversary, a potluck. When I was in Boy Scouts as a kid, this is probably where we would have met or had, had some celebrations. You could do Reynolds State, you know, state meetings. I'm sure there's a need for that here, any, any variety of spaces. Generally, these are associated with, with some sort of food service operation, whether that's, we're talking right now a commercial kitchen. So this is a full service licensed kitchen where you can prepare food to be served. A subset of that would be a catering kitchen. That's not necessarily a licensed facility, but that, that a caterer could come in and they could plate their dishes and, and move the dirty dishes out. Another variant that we're seeing is more of a teaching kitchen. And so these are examples that are in community centers. You can see the, the image here in the, the center of the slide. That seems to be an after-school class, high school age kids learning life skills and cooking. And that's certainly something valid for seniors as well. And actually here in the lower right corner, that's a picture of a catering kitchen. So it's, it has sort of a commercial quality to it, but it doesn't have the heavy duty grill or stove with the fire suppression system. Aerobics stands, these are group exercise rooms. Generally a wood floor. It could also have a resilient rubber concrete floor, but we want something that could be used for dance. You can see a hip hop classicery in the middle here. We've got a variety of group exercise classes. Here's a spinning class. This could be for dance, yoga, martial arts classes. Again, a very, we want to have flexible spaces, but we don't want them so multipurpose that they're multi-useless either.
What does that mean? Multi-purpose but multi-useless.
We, we want the new multipurpose, but not so multipurpose that they're multi-useless. In other words, you're trying to be everything to everybody and so you've not satisfied any particular need. So I think we like to probably keep this more in the, the athletic range, the group exercise range. But surely any dance or movement class would be suitable for, for this space. Fitness and weights, this is a general fitness and weight area. So we'd have a combination of cardio equipment here, bikes, maybe rowing machines, treadmills. We'd have some strength conditioning spaces. So those are the selectorized pieces that you have with the weights where you can select the weight you're going to lift. And then just flat weights. And we generally like to have the flat weights a little bit behind because that tends to be more threatening to people that are new to the, to exercise. And generally there's more use of the, the cardio. So we keep that up front. Generally, this is common as you, as you want or need to. Some of our clients allow personal trainers in, others don't. It, it all varies. We heard some interest in indoor turf space and that image is in the lower right is a facility in Boise that has some indoor turf. And it's right adjacent actually to a big strength operation. So there's some big plates there. So this is just fitness equipment. You come and you work out as you need to. The objective here is really it's, we're, we're trying to introduce the idea of exercise for your community. So this is again for all ages and abilities. There's fully the expectation that as people build their skill set, that they might migrate out away from the community center and they might go to the private sector and start to go to a 24 hour fitness or some other, as their needs evolve. A multi-purpose court, this is the gymnasium, generally with a wood floor. We could consider a resilient floor if you're interested. We've done several of those. This is for basketball, volleyball, pickleball. Again, we can put, do children's tumbling classes. You can see in this lower image, there's a screen that comes down out of the ceiling. And so we can, in, in our case, I think we're looking at starting at four courts and possibly eight courts, Corey. But we can subdivide those courts and so we can limit the, the ball play into one area of the room or we can open it up to a wider area. And so you could have multiple activities. If you had four courts, you could have four different activities going on in those four courts. From child play, from a child tumbling class to a volleyball, to pickleball, to the basketball. I, you might want to keep the pickleball and the child tumbling apart because I think those pickleball, pickleballers can get pretty vicious. Again, the, the objective is to have a flexible space, something that you can adapt as you need to over the course of the day. I know even for seniors, I've seen, I think it was in Sammamish, I love this. They had, or it might have been in Bend, Oregon, stand tall, don't fall classes for seniors. So great for balance, that kind of thing. And last walk jog track. And actually we did a project in Federal Way and I, this, it's been 10 or 15 years, but I remember a team there talked to me about the desire to have a place to walk or run in the afternoon or evening, because I know it gets dark and wet here. And they just wanted someplace that was light and safe that they can exercise. And they, they couldn't have that need met at school. They didn't have it, they didn't have access to private clubs. So having a, using this space in the upper part of the gym, as you can see in the upper image here and the lower image. But having an elevated walk jog track and that's just a track that moves around the facility. You can walk or jog on it. An interesting variant, we've had folks reach out to us and say, what about strollers? We've got parents and parents, they want to get their exercise, they bring their strollers. We've also introduced this idea of a adventure track and so on, so our projects. And this has manifested itself several ways. We've introduced a stair or hill element. So in the very smallest version, it's just a series of stairs that go down and up. There's still a flat option, so you can jog and walk around on the flat, but you can get a little stair climb. This particular one actually does a big loop to loop around a center element and a play structure. So we can make this more elaborate. We can also introduce that stair or that jog walk track around the perimeter of the courts if that's desired. So we're, we're doing that on a couple of projects as well. So again, trying to provide a variety of amenities. These are places, we, we want you to walk in any hour of the day, any day of the week. You're going to see Tom Water residents here. We want it to be energetic.
Can I see Councilmember Dahlma also?
Thank you, Mayor. I really dig this. I feel like the Tom Water Valley used to do that. I, in high school, used to do that track. I'm wondering with all these great ideas, how do you incorporate those who have some mobility challenges? Who we also want to get out and not feel isolated? How does that fit into all of this? Like, will be there, will the, there be an elevator? What does that accessibility look like?
If, if, if we do go up to an upper track or an upper level area, we absolutely will have an elevator. And you're correct, council member, these spaces all will be accessible and we pay close attention to that. It's not just the bathrooms, but access to all the fitness equipment, all the rooms. The, the objective is that, I'll say it again, it's available to people of all ages and abilities.
I love that. Thank you so much.
So this shows an example of what we call a field house, which is really moving beyond one or perhaps two courts into multiple courts. This particular one is in West Virginia and it shows, I think that's four high school courts through here, Corey. I haven't been to this facility yet.
Which courts?
Yeah, I think it has eight, doesn't it?
Yeah, there's more on behind.
Okay. And then the one in the lower right, that building is in suburban Dallas and it has, I think, 12 courts. And these are more tuned towards sports competitions and tournaments. They're more, that takes the building more into the realm of you're supporting hotels and restaurants in the area for, and providing a center for tournaments. And so I think we'd want to work carefully with staff to understand that if you want to take the building this way, the drivers behind that and, and understand the business plan more clearly. And then have an image of a small multi-use gym here. We've done these buildings, actually, very humbly, this is more of a metal building design. But we're doing one in Redmond, Oregon right now. It's all metal building. I think it looks, it doesn't look like a metal building to look like it. We just finished a job like this up in Gig Harbor or Peninsula Metropolitan Park District. But we can still do smaller facilities. This one in the lower image has, still has two cross courts and then a main court this way. So we can have multiple activities occur and everyone get their workout. Everyone can have their, their time on the court and feel, get, get their exercise. Do you want to take care of the floor plan?
Let's do it. All right, so floor plan adjacencies, looking to kind of commit. So this is tying into the program that we went through. So the, the day in the life programming that Keith went over is based on the program we got from the public meetings and the executive steering. So that's what we base that off of. And that's what these floor plans show. So that's kind of, but I apologize. So for this building, after our last workshop, workshop three, we had some comments that we did want to have the walk jog track in this project. So we had to take it up to a second floor. So what you'll see here is just the first floor. I want to go through some of the program spaces. All the items in green are actually on the first floor. These are up on the second floor. Total floor area, we are approximately 77,000 square feet. And then for parking area, we have kind of what we always run with is it's typically one to one. So you need one square for the parking or one square for the building for this type of facility. For budget, we presented earlier this year that it was about 46, 47 million. We're giving you a range now, just because there was a delay, we're picking this back up kind of six months after. So it kind of shifts the schedule. And then also it did increase a little bit because we updated to a commercial kitchen, a larger admin space to take into account the Parks and Rec Department. But I do want to note that this does not include any cost for land acquisition and it does not include any market volatility contingencies. That's what we use for describing tariffs. And just wanted to note here, as Keith mentioned earlier, going through a day in life, that this is intended for all ages. So we're thinking of this as a multi-generational recreation center. So to go through this, what we got to is admin lobby circulation and support spaces. So that's your orange spaces here, think of your circulation, storage offices and mechanical rooms, just that they're over behind them. For here, we have a gymnasium, kind of half of a field house. So it's four high school sized courts. That can be eight volleyball cross courts or it could be two middle school cross courts. And then we also outlined kind of the intent. What we heard from the public is there is, needs to be more hardcore gymnasium space in town. When we got to do in a full field house, the number was a little too high for the executive steering committee to be like, okay, we, let's shut this to council. So we were like, let's be a little bit more realistic and just cut it down in half. So four hard core gyms and then also kind of an aquatic expansion for some time in the future. So we are thinking about all these elements when we're putting the plans together. So you'll see that this could be a quick add to add four additional high school basketball courts. And that could go up and then you can also extend the walk jog track.
But now, and I, and we could get per high school court, we can provide three pickleball courts. Don't forget about the.
I know. So like come up behind me. But just want to walk through the plan here real quick. So we're intending that the entry is around here by admin. Admin is the space where we typically have your kind of control point. So if there's a membership based model to this, you have to stand in and anything past admin. So accessing the elevator to go upstairs, accessing the gym, child watch. That is part of the membership to get into this. And we took note of, sorry. All kind of the rentable spaces, public spaces, we kept past a control point. So you'll see we have a classroom here, the community room. It's your outdoor patio gathering. We have the commercial kitchen for the community room, toilet rooms here, multi-purpose room. This box right here is the senior lounge. And we were able to kind of show a little senior patio right there.
So the, the use model for those would be either you would rent the space in advance and that's how the facility would recover the cost or it's considered a benefit to your residents and so it's free to use. So that would be the case for probably the seniors.
And then I would also like to note as well is that the gym volume can be cut down into smaller portions, depending on how many divider curtains you want. So technically these could act as four separate gym spaces and you could say bridge them out to four different parties. The community room, it's the size to hold about 240 people and that typically can be subdivided into three equal spaces. So you have more rental space depending on the needs of the community. We're going to hop up to. We're going to hop up to the second floor. So you'll see here, this is where we have our elevator and the stairs, we like to do kind of monumental stairs to the, as what we call in an office, like a cupcake moment, very design-heavy effort. It needs to be kind of like eye-popping or something, I'm trying to think of
Something to encourage you to use the stair.
So up here, we have the fitness and weights, we have them over at the locker rooms because it gets very loud under those spaces. Now, we have aerobics and dance up here as well, the indoor turf area, that was asked where we kind of just split it into two smaller ones to make it fit up here. We have plenty of storage spaces for aerobics and dance, for indoor turf. And then the green up here is the walk jog track, which is basically on the second floor or mezzanine, and it's just open to below, so you can see the activities going on in the gymnasium.
I should, I should interject, the, our cost model includes adequate storage spaces for all the rooms, it's got janitors closets, toilets, mechanical electrical spaces, so this isn't just the spaces that you're going to use, it's all the spaces we need to build the building.
And kind of what I have up here, so I consider storage support spaces also mechanical and stuff like that, it's all kind of factored into these boxes here. And then upstairs is where we keep the exercise spaces. So downstairs, it's more kind of passive, some active, and then upstairs, we try to locate all the active elements because that's typically past a control point. Next, we'll show you is kind of what a standalone senior center would be. So we see here, so basically, just to kind of show, when we're talking about it, we kept kind of senior-focused spaces up here and the front of the building, and that's typically, and pretty much the same what we had in here, the only thing that we did was added a smaller event hall, this is to more or less match kind of the program spaces you were offering, but larger for a standalone facility. So in here, we have an admin space, senior lounge, toilet rooms, support spaces for storage, commercial kitchen for a community events hall, a senior wellness space, a multipurpose room, and a classroom. This is approximately eighteen thousand square feet. Parking area is still equivalent to what a rec center would be, so it's about one-to-one. And for the budget, as I mentioned with the previous slides, that this does not include lane acquisition, and it excludes market volatility. But we were looking at ten to twelve million dollars for a standalone facility like this. And as Keith mentioned before, that these typically operate from like eight to two, eight to one-thirty, Monday through Friday only, and they're closed on that's what we've seen typically as a standalone center. We want to talk about sites? All right, so could I just ask you to So I will just ask to move the people online to the left side of the screen, because we're information-heavy on the right. Yeah, thank you. Alright, so just want to look at the proposed sites. So at the January presentation, we had these five sites, so we looked at six different sites as of today. First, we did a site over at the airport, which is down here, another site at the airport, the Wash Dot site, the brewery site, a site down here at Ninety-third and Ninety-nine, and then the last one we looked at, we were out here in June, we walked with the Port of Olympia at this site down here at Kimmy Street and Eighty. So these are kind of color-coded, red sites are ones that have been kind of taken out of consideration. And the green sites are the ones that are still kind of up for grabs for this. Under consideration. Needed to change the
Yep. Thank you, I, I'm confused about why the red are not in consideration, why A and B?
So for those, these properties are owned by the Port of Olympia. She can't see the thing on the screen, sorry, they're owned by the Port of Olympia, and when Keith and I were out here with Chuck back in June, we met with a gentleman, Mike Ed. I agree. And we kind of went through these different sites, so the intent for this, originally, we thought, alright, this could be like a limited cost site. But for instance, Site A right here, which is right on Tumwater Boulevard, we were practically told that if we were to choose that site, we would have to pay market value. Because this is a site kind of put aside by the Port of Olympia as like a revenue generator, and so they would not want to do kind of like a mutual
It's a, it's a prominent site, and they want to get full value for it to develop it. And so they're looking more for a commercial client.
And then B site, we looked at, this one was gophers, had a gopher issue. Brewery, we did that, that was just a lot to redevelop.
There was an extensive investment required by the city and a long timeline to make it develop.
And then E, I believe, was under consideration, but was already taken by other projects. So that's how we ended up with the Wash Dot site, and the site down here at Kimmy Street and Eightieth, which the Port of Olympia actually came to the Parks and Rec Department and was like, let's look at this one together. Site F is adjacent to one of the local middle schools, and it is also something that is relatively cheap to acquire. And I know that
Thank you for that background.
Yep, and I know that there could still be some works with that, based there's a whole spiel about the whole area that needed to be taken care of by the Port of Olympia. And so this, these two sites are the ones C and F, Wash Dot, and Kimmy Street and Eightieth are the ones that would have low impact, potentially low impact to the city to acquire, to build a community recreation center.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm wondering for the Wash Dot site, have there, has there been engagement with the neighborhoods right behind, directly behind that area?
We have not engaged with any neighborhoods, neighborhood folks in terms of what we've done to date on the Wash Dot site, which has been primarily the environmental contamination investigation. So there's not been, other than what BRS has done through their public process, there hasn't been any specific outreach to those folks in sites at Site C, no.
And just to follow up on that, what would, what would the construction schedule look like?
We are working with our consultant team, both with BRS, but more specifically with Haley and Aldrich team, and there is a construction schedule that has acquisition and required environmental cleanup being completed, and construction on this site beginning in twenty-twenty-seven. Is that right? So it would be, it could be construct, construction could begin on Site C in twenty-twenty-seven.
Right, I'm, I'm just a little, just because of other neighborhoods that are impacted by potential projects. And, and I've spent a good nine years at that site. And I'm familiar with the neighborhoods behind, I'm just, I'm a little bit to, to pick a site, and if this was the site that we would pick, I, I would really want that, I would want them to have a heads-up, I feel.
Absolutely.
I'm, I'm not sure what the scope of work is at this point for community outreach, once you get to a decision. Community outreach above and beyond what's happened to date, you know, getting to this point. I don't know if there's a specific steps in the scope to
I, I, you know, I, I don't know, at least that we we anticipated as a specific event, that's not to say that if, if there's support, you know, broad support for that site, that would certainly be something we would consider as a, you know, workshop or associated with a workshops, maybe an open house or something to talk to the neighbors and hear their concerns. You know, I'd offer, I would say that generally, all neighbors are excited to see a community recreation center in their backyard, but there's certainly a lot of resources, it's probably generate a lot more controversy than a community rec center. We want to provide a facility that's a good neighbor. For this, you know, you, you all represent the city, these are your neighbors, you're going to see them at the grocery store, and so we want to have a facility, a building that looks nice, it's easy to maintain, that has nice landscaping, wonderful amenities, that, that these people are going to want to live next to.
Yeah, and just one, one more thing on the Wash Dot site. In the Capitol corridor plan, that site is identified as a community hub of some sort, so it's been identified through a planning process that it would be a, a location for, I think the plan itself actually calls for it to be mixed-use development that has some public space, some public use space, I believe more outdoor space, but then residential, multifamily, and then like, like commercial coffee shops, sandwich shops, those types of things, so. One of the, a, a, and the idea of the City of Tumwater doing something, that that site was actually a project that John Dome was working on. And so the two projects in terms of looking at the redevelopment opportunity and looking at it as a potential site for the community center are things that have grown out of exist, they've, they've come together and they've grown out of other existing processes.
So I'm going to recognize Councilmember Jefferson, sort out, Bobby, and Paul, so Councilmember Jefferson.
Yes, can you tell me the price difference between the prime real estate A and B and F? Is it, are we talking ten million, fifty million?
So A and B are technically not listed for sale. They are advertised as still being owned by the Port of Olympia, but you lease the land from them. That's A and B versus Site F. That would be kind of, they have a requirement, the Port of Olympia, to provide something that is, how did he describe it?
I mean, they, they're, Charter encourages community partnerships, and so I, I, our understanding informally in the conversation on the site was that they were putting this forward to really meet the intent of their charter and build a bridge with Tumwater. And I, I gather it gets, it's complicated in terms of the airport and the impacts of the airport and the need to. I think that was one of the issues with Site B also, was that they want to maintain, or their, part of their mission is that they need to maintain that site for, for airport-related activities. So as they plan, I'm just remembering this now for the conversation, sorry, the, the the sites around the airport are supposed to support the activities at the airport, and so as they have a vision for, for making the airport more than it is now, they want to reserve the use of those sites for that activity. So, does that help?
Yes.
So there's like, and to that, there's an assessed value for those, I don't believe they go up to the double-digit millions. So that's just from the last time I looked at it, but it was kind of based on the conversation we had with the Port of Olympia. They didn't think the port, the commissioners would approve of a community center on this location.
Uh, let's see, I, your pictures are covered, I was just curious about the si, the size of Site F, I was making notes here. I can't see it's covered.
Oh, Site F is twenty-four acres.
Twenty-four acres, okay, thank you.
Yep. So it's a, it's a little bit larger than the brewery site.
And bigger than the Wash Dot site, so, okay.
Correct.
Okay, got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, thank you, Mayor. So it seems that Site F is not available, given upon the, to previous speakers, right?
Uh, that is incorrect, so basically for F, it would be kind of a, what it would turn into, just, this is very paraphrased, right? The city working with the Port of Olympia to do some sort of like land or something, or like a land lease to be able, that land becomes City of Tumwater, you build a community new rec center on there. And that meets their obligation to the charter they had, so that's kind of high-level what we had discussed with him on site.
I, I, sorry, I, I wouldn't characterize that there was a land swap, I think that they see in a partnership, it would probably be leased, it would probably be a very affordable rate in, in order to meet their objectives for community, you know, cooperation with the community.
Okay, so if I'm hearing you correctly, it probably would be available based upon certain conditions, right?
Correct.
Okay, so I know, it looked like Councilman Benjamin Jefferson had asked you about something about the footprint for those facility, you showed, I believe, three different footprints?
Two, we, we, one, one had two floors, so we showed a lower floor and an upper floor for one option, and then that was the, the recreation center option, the community center option, and we had a senior center option, it was more smaller, all I wanted to say.
Okay, so now, if you've, if you've assuming that F is okay for us to acquire, and you were to put that, you had to put that footprint, the audio, up, up on the lower floor on this property, would we still have enough space for future development and also for parking, given it's twenty-four acres?
Yes, sir, and we'll have an illustration of that in a couple of slides.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Looking at this, and thank you for doing the red and the green, right, that helps put it in perspective of where we're at today. Looking at the acreage, right, like, one of my priorities is building for today and for tomorrow, so just naturally, I'm inclined for the twenty-four acres with that outdoor-indoor space, so I appreciate that, and then I'm also, I would love a success story with the Port of Olympia, right, they're the largest landowner in Tumwater. I would love a success story, so I appreciate you identifying the owners and that the timeline, and I'm also thinking like the Wash Dot site, what Administrator Parks was talking about, that mixed use. So hearing all of this, just naturally, I'm thinking, well, I want Site F, right, building for today, building for tomorrow, that space, so I just want to say thank you for putting it like this and showing, and I'm also looking at the City of Tumwater, where really our future growth is going to be is in South Tumwater, southeast and southwest, which is exactly where Site F is, so I appreciate that, because I'm also thinking, how do I get inner-city transit down there? How do I do the infill, right, how do I provide access and services? So thank you for presenting it like this.
Any other questions before we move on?
We appreciate the dialogue.
Yes. So this is kind of showing for the Wash Dot site, so what we did is we took the plans off these like natural floor plan adjacencies, and just kind of went to show you what would be disturbed with construction, so as we're seeing here, rec center construction area is the red box. The blue back here is kind of like undeveloped natural land, so rec center construction, that also takes into account the parking requirements.
So the objective is the red area would be the building footprint itself, two stories, parking associated with that footprint, drives, drop-offs, landscaping, you know, maybe a playground if, if we have the funds and need for that.
Dog park, I think, I mentioned the dog park. Yeah. And so that is where the, the main construction would be, and since this is kind of like on Capitol Boulevard, we do realize that we have to address the street. And since the plan that we had shown is more like it could fit on either site, we didn't want to show it cited because it would change if this was selected, on how the building interacts with Capitol Boulevard. Also, as part of this site, to get a second means of egress from the site, there needs to be, and there is a future plan for a new roundabout here. But I
The green area.
Give or take that general area, and this would become a main access point into the rec center property, and then also And then also maintaining the two drives that are there. And then potentially a drive in the back out in that neighborhood. I believe that's, Hazel something Drive. This is also, uh, large enough for when we were doing test fits earlier in the feasibility study to fit a, like aquatic center expansion and associated parking.
Does the red area include available land to put in? You, you showed, you showed the four courts. You showed an area for an expansion doubling of that.
Yep.
So all of that, all of the programming and the expansion that you've looked at is, will fit into the red area.
Correct. Um, and then also what you'll see up here, uh, is kind of the rating criteria. Uh, so you'll see what we do is we have, it's about four different categories that we look at. So site features, usability services, anticipated costs, and community planning issues. Um, these are also weighted based on kind of what the community values. And then we have a total value and score down here. So the max rating that they could have gotten without waiting was 62 and with wait, it goes to 210. So I want to point that out to you because you'll see a, um, a drastic change when we go to the next. Uh, any more comments on kind of the Wash Dot site or what's on the screen currently?
Yes. The price difference between this one and the other one, or building in this area from building out there. Do you have that? Are you going to show us that? Is it cheaper to build here and in the other area?
Say not necessarily. It depends.
I, I, I think the, the difference here is probably the infrastructure um, associated with construction. We really need the roundabout to be in place to get full turn access of Capitol Boulevard into the site.
So roundabout first.
So, so, and so that's a, that's a big number.
Right.
And you, you all know what those cost. I don't know what this costs.
Yeah. Oh, all right.
For Mayor, Mayor, for, uh, for better comparison, would it be, would it be prudent if they, so you tell us what the size score is, what the, uh, what the project's total cost would be? And what are the significant like, like the app that they run about? And then, uh, I guess that way we will make for a better informed decision, in my opinion.
Going to get there, Councilmember Gaby. And the roundabout is not part of this project. That's part of our Capitol Boulevard design. So that is separate from this. It's just in ju- in conjunction with this. So it's not funded with the, that.
But they just said that, uh, they need a roundabout to be there for, for this to, to be feasible. Isn't that what I just had?
Yes. I, I think the roundabout really provides the access you need to this site. Otherwise, you're going to have a facility that you need to get access to site, you know, left and right, you know, full, full range of movement off Capitol Boulevard. And I think at, at peak times, not a traffic engineer, but I would, uh, I'm guessing that would be difficult to accommodate. The, the other site I'd add may require other, um, traffic mitigation, maybe not directly adjacent to the, to the site, but, um, maybe more remotely from it. We haven't started to study that yet. We haven't had the time. But this one, we, we definitely know that there was the roundabout in the plan. And I know i- in my mind, this, this, um, site did not score well with, without the roundabout. But once we found out about the roundabout, in my mind, it becomes a much more viable site. Um, the number we're trying to provide is giving you a, uh, a budget number that we think we could build a commendable building that the site would deserve that suitably. It's Tomwater, it's urban, it's really reflecting where Tomwater's going. And it would work equally well on the same site. So with respect to, does it cost me more to build on one side or the other? I think for our purposes, they're relatively the same in terms of putting the building on the site. I think that the challenge becomes more other external issues or issues that are beyond our expertise in terms of the, the mitigation on this site, uh, possibly mitigation on the other site and then, and then, um, traffic issues.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
So, is that a first?
So, so now, if you build a house without a front door, that house is not secure. So if you built this, uh, uh, if you build on this side without a roundabout, people can get to it. It's just that simple. So that is significant. I mean, whether they are two separate, uh, project, they are interdependent on one another. If, if you need to move people to that site. And the community center is for people to get to. So there is no way you can minus one or no add the other one. So that's just my opinion.
I, I, I don't think anybody is suggesting that they're necessarily separate. I think what they're trying to clarify and the nuance is, is maybe that the, the cost that they've provided, the 47 to 52, is basically going to be about the same on either site. Both sites are going to have infrastructure improvement that's going to be necessary. So this site, um, is, is predicated on us completing planned roundabout at T Street, which is in, I believe is, it is in the secure tip. I could be wrong on that and I will correct myself if I am. Uh, the other site is going to have other road and true improvements. If you, if you think about, it's, it's basically the area, the Site F is the area that's immediately north of Bush Middle School on Kimmy Street. So I don't believe that there are any sidewalks on Kimmy Street. So there, there's going to be infrastructure improvements on both of these projects. Yeah. That's, that's the, that's the important takeaway at this point.
Councilmember Dahlia.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that Administrator Parks. I'm just thinking the timing. So thank you for going back. You're saying like, we'd have to have the roundabout first and then build the, the community center here and we're going to have that all ready to go in 2027? I mean, the last one, we, it was two years, right? So how does that timeline work?
So, so the question that I asked, answered with respect to 2027 was when this site would be ready to be built upon.
Got it.
That was not, um, the, the, the question wasn't when, when would the roundabout be in and when could we put this, that this, um, this project on there? So I, I don't know what the timeline is for, uh, the T Street roundabout. Um, the way our transportation improvement plan works and our six year, uh, excuse me, our, um, transportation capital facilities plan, we have a variety of projects that are listed and they are intended to be, um, they are prioritized, but they're intended to be nimble and flexible based on the different opportunities that present themselves. Either for outside funding from a grant resource or we do a lot of taking advantage of private development or, or other development projects that, that trigger and that let, allow us to partner, um, and get stuff done, uh, less, um, uh, less expensively if we're, if we're partnering with, with other development projects. So.
What we do know is that we don't have a timeline for that roundabout to be able to do the community center like successively, like in 2027.
Yeah, we haven't got, we, we haven't gotten to the point where we have been able to make that level of assessment. That's correct.
Got it. Thank you, Administrator Parks. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Uh, now we're going to go to the Kimmy Street site. Uh, you guys on the screen can see it, uh, but right here, it's noted as frontage improvements. Uh, there was a comment that there is a sidewalk, but it ends right here.
Yeah, I didn't think there was.
Goes to the middle school. So everything up here and up north, it's just a road and a ditch. So there needs to be frontage improvements. Um, you'll, there's also an access road back here. This is a municipal water facility.
So there is that up above.
Municipal waters right here. This is kind of the bus garage is why I'm calling it for the school system. Uh, so what we can see here, this is a 24 acre site. And same with the site at Wash Dot or at the Wash Dot site, the red area would incorporate the building, the parking and the expansion opportunities outlined on that first floor plan that we saw. So that leaves, so typically what we're seeing is about 10 to 12 acres for the rec center itself, 10 on the low end. Um, to do a good kind of site development. And then all this is to be kept undeveloped. It could be kind of developed into a trail system or a potential, um, of some sort. Wanted to note here, as I mentioned, like kind of the scoring, we're low on the scoring, but the only reason why is because, um, down here, kind of like adjacent cultural amenities, the distance from kind of what is traditionally seen as the center of your town or the city. Um, pedestrian access, bicycle access, public acceptance of the site, partnership collateral. And then also one that gets you on this, and I believe, um, as I mentioned, a couple by the council members is just the public transit down there does not current.
So the red is, that's what would, pretty much all the trees in that area would have to be, would have to come down in order to accommodate.
Most of them, yes.
And then if we did a pool, eventually the undeveloped area, which is pretty heavily forested, we would have to do the same associated. Or would that, would that actually fit in the red?
That will fit in the red.
Red is 12 acres.
Correct. That'll, that'll fit in the red. Yes.
For, for, for reference, I, I think a gym, my sort of rule of thumb is, is 10,000 square feet and a six lane swimming pool is about 6,000 square feet. And so that's about quarter of an acre. Just to give you a frame of reference. And so if the red area is 12 acres, I feel like we could accommodate a swimming pool expansion, whether it's a six lane lap pool or it could be a leisure pool. Any variety.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that low scoring, right? I live in this area and it has been an ongoing discussion with council members and staff of that rural urban lifestyle and access to services, right? I don't have a sidewalk. So we talked about, oh, we can't go there because we don't have access. We don't have access. We don't have, have access. But we have all these demands and all these requirements to do housing, do the infill, right? Provide these services. I appreciate this score because if we don't set the tone and plan for our future, then we'll never, I'll never get a sidewalk and I'm still on well and septic. So I appreciate this going to show the diversity of that rural urban divide and access and services. So I really appreciate this score. Thank you.
Councilmember Kathy. You're muted.
I'll start over. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, uh, listening, listening to this, what this site is, gives me some chills and some remember when type of thing. Um, and I wanted to ask, is this site, um, compromised at all? Or we have to pay attention to our aquifers and our water supply and all of that that we talked about, uh, before? And also, um, the cutting down of, uh, the forest, the trees? I mean, we went, we went through this and the truck traffic on the street and all of that. Is, is, are we close enough here to all of that backstory?
So I, yeah, uh, thank you, Councilmember Kathy. I can't answer the specific question about, uh, aquifer recharge areas. The, the, there is a, we do have a well. The city's well is located on, it's the bottom right hand corner of the red area. So there is, there is some wellhead protection that, that would need to be accommodated. And the only other thing I can answer with respect to, uh, the, um, the groundwater a good share of this area, I don't know if this parcel specifically, so I, we'll have to talk with, we'll have to check with Dan. There, there's a good portion of the new market area generally that has a high groundwater table. And that doesn't mean that you can't develop there. We have critical area requirements. We have, um, you know, we have regulations that are intended to protect, um, critical areas, uh, resource lands. Um, you know, whether it's wellhead protection areas, aquifer recharge areas, we absolutely have developer regulations in place, uh, that could protect, um, uh, groundwater and wellhead, uh, wellhead protection areas. And here, those would be, um, um, the, you know, worked into the actual design of the project, um, as we, as we look at moving, moving forward.
Well, I, I just remember it was long and it was hard and, uh, a lot of people were upset and, um, people are already going to be upset if we go that far out to do a community center. But these issues that, that were present before, I would vote against this site just having to enter back into that and our groundwater and water for the future. And all of that, uh, all of that kind of, we mitigate it. Well, you, you know, it's, 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 it's not the right place for, for the time. And I know that, uh, Councilmember Dahlhoff is talking about the future. And I fully appreciate that, that, that we need to. We're also talking about um, a town center and creating community and putting stuff together. And I think whizzing all the way out there now for the early years of having a, a community center out there rather than closer in, uh, is, my opinion, uh, is, is not the timely thing to do right now. And I certainly don't want to do any more damage environmentally. And this is a site that has that potential. So those are my current thoughts on things. I won't go into other things, but just that. So thank you.
Councilor Sartau. And then I'll go to Mike.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate, uh, Councilmember Kathy's concerns there. Um, but looking at the, the picture here, it looks like, uh, that the construction could be contained on the red part and that the other part would not have to be developed. Is that what you're looking at? Or am I looking at the picture wrong? I was just confirming.
That's correct.
Okay.
There's trees on the red part, too.
And that's not to say we know enough yet to know that we need all the red part.
Okay.
Um, for community planning issues, some of these things are able to be assessed very concretely, like pedestrian access, you can measure their sidewalks, stuff like that. But I'm wondering how the community engagement sessions have played into that? Is this also like, are those taken into account when it comes to these scores in terms of the feedback we receive?
Um, for the other sites, yes. Um, this site came to our attention after we've had our community meetings. And so I think that's something we would want to do is, uh, next time we have a, a public engagement to, to ask about that.
So like sites A and B that are in a similar location, they have need feedback based on those. And it sort of stands to reason that if there were concerns based on accessibility and that was a factor in those, those would probably be analogous to the site, given the similar location.
So, kind of in.
I think my understanding of Site A is on a bus line.
Is on Tomwater Boulevard. So this has public transit. B, down here, this is, what was it? 78th and Center?
It's not on a bus line. So it's more analogy. B is more analogous to F.
Yeah.
In the other part.
These two are more similar. That this is more of kind of like C spot.
What about E?
E is not.
E was, what was, when, because E, so F is the only site on this that hasn't been discussed at the public level, right? Because.
All the other sites.
It kind of came out of, I think it actually came out of our joint work session with the Port Mission. And we heard very clearly from them that they wanted to find a way to partner with us. So I think, um, and, and, you know, A and B are, are prime real estate for commercial development that the Port needs to, um, have to be able to continue to meet their, if A, the obligations to support your operations. And I feel like my understanding is they kind of came to us and said, well, we want to work with Tomwater. We want to identify a way we could partner. And so what about this site? And, and it came after that probably. But, but E was part of the conversation. So, I don't, I think, wondering, so Michael, are you wondering what level of concern there was about accessible, those accessibility issues? Yeah, basically like, like if those scores were based on the community conversations, I think that's sort of relevant in a way that it's saying, well, this, this is how the community feels about the merits of that site in particular, about just some of the physical location characteristics of the, the, oh, I mean, all those, all those metrics down.
the, oh, I mean, all those, all those metrics down there. Some of these things are super readily like, some of these things I, I don't think you necessarily need as much public input on in order to be able to analyze. But things like, um, adjacent cultural amenities or potential, like, access to, well, access to public transit is a very literal one, but it just, like, I'm trying to get a, a sense of like a vibe from what the community said would be the best site. And seems like if they offered feedback on A or B or the other one, and some of those characteristics, shared commonalities with the physical characteristics of F, then even though it wasn't directly asked, you could sort of compute some of the vibes that we gathered.
My, my recollection is the, the site F, I think everybody realized that, that seemed very remote. It, it wasn't accessible. Or E, sorry.
And it was already under a development. There was a developer already working with this.
And so there is a proposal down there. It's not inside the urban growth area. At one point in time, they were advocating. But it, so that's why it was analyzed.
There was, there was a backstory behind it. Uh, I, I would share, uh, what we heard broadly from the community, the sentiment. I, I mean, you know, the emotion was, we need to do something on the brewery site. And as we looked at brewery site, the infrastructure to get to it, the utilities, the, the work needed to do to, to, for flood prevention measures, or there was a considerable cost to that. Again, before you even start to work with the site. And so I, I totally understand the sentiment for doing something on that site, but it's just the price tag to make it buildable uh, was equal to or greater than by multiples, the value of the building you put there. And so then I think that's where these other sites have come into play is being, you know, both a sooner timeline and more affordable. And we didn't really, you know, the, the public, whatever we've shown the sites, you know, what the one they talked about is the brewery site.
Right. Yeah. I mean, the brewery site's what it feels to me because it also fosters what we're trying to do in terms of place making.
Absolutely.
Storytelling and redevelopment of that brown field generally.
Yes.
I see some of that also in the Wash Dot site. I mean, it's, it's a cool old art deco, has some cool old art deco elements, but it's also kind of a security hazard. Breaking in. The nice part about redeveloping this means we will clean up those soils that we know are dirty there. I've got some round of four points on that section probably. So I, I, I do sort of see some of those brownfield elements and elements for opportunities because that's, that's where you enter the city most commonly is through that exit. And if you come into the city and the first thing you see is a bright shiny recreation center, I think that's a visual image that, says a lot about our priorities in terms of prioritizing community and building community and offering services. But, yeah, I mean, I like the brewery side too.
How, how, um, and the, did the community actually review these ratings?
Um, not on this.
On, on, on all of the sites?
I think we showed them on all the sites.
How, how important were some of the one, how important were the community planning issues?
I don't recall that anyone really commented on.
Okay.
They were just much more.
Brewery site.
Brewery school.
Yep. Um, and kind of what it is, there's, there's another portion of this document too, is the rating criteria. And it gives you for the rating scale, the one to three and whatnot, it explains what that takes into account. Those criteria and the rating scale was also developed with the landscape architect we're working with on this, Robert Joel and Associates. And kind of the community aspect comes in with the weighting right here. It's like, what's very important? And this was done also, um, in conjunction with the executive steering committee and also from comments from the public meetings that we had. Cause we did go through like, these are the sites we're looking at. This is what each one has. There were six of them. Timmy Street was not on there. As Keith said, that was an addition, I think last two, two, three months. And we're really commenting on it too much.
I'll go to Councilmember Von Schultz and Councilmember Bobby and then go to Phil.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm just wondering, since this second site, we didn't, I mean, we did sites nearby, but we didn't do, we didn't talk about this with the public. I'm, I'm wondering if we couldn't have an opportunity for two things that I would like. I would like a tour of both sites, so I can get in my mind's eye. Um, I wish I was more like a visionary, but I'm not. I really have to see something to understand it. Um, and I'm just wondering, since the public was kind of focused on the brewery site and that's a no-go, if we don't do our due diligence, especially for that neighborhood right behind the Wash Dot site, um, to do specialized public engagement to let them know, hey, this is what we're looking at. And I understand that this is in the plans to be developed, but to really have an opportunity and then to get some of the questions answered, like, what does it mean for the aquifer? What is, you know, I'd really like to hear from Dan Smith on this site, on both of them really, because I mean, is the cleanup going to be done by Wash Dot in time? I mean, I have so many questions and I'm sure the community would too. So I'm just wondering, I know that you want us to commit to a site tonight and I, I don't feel with all of this, that I, I can personally do that.
Councilmember Gaby?
Thank you, Mayor. So, um, I'm looking at your criteria with which you, uh, do this scoring of the site. And, um, so, so the one that is jumping at me right off the bat is just, uh, access to public transit. I don't know if, uh, public transit is actually functioning in terms, in, in a sense that nobody rides the bus. They mostly drive around empty. So, that shouldn't even be a criteria with which we would look at this. Cause people just drive wherever they're going to. That's one. And then at two, in terms of, um, so, so I'm looking at, uh, item number four, community planning issue, and adjacent to cultural amenities. I don't know what that means. And then, uh, pedestrian access, I think, uh, isn't that also your, uh, access to public transit?
Pedestrian is walking. Those sidewalks, bike paths, that sort of thing.
Okay. Unless, unless you confuse Tom Water for New York or LA, we don't walk down here, we drive. The most, and hence the reason why our buses don't have ridership. So those criteria doesn't really, um, identify with, uh, with the, with the community with which these facilities are going to be sighted. Now, if you have a facility on, uh, Capitol Boulevard, the people that live in adjacent area might walk to it, but I, I don't think if they live on the other side of town, which is divided by I five, are going to walk to it. They're going to be driving to it, in which case the runabout plays an important, um, answers in how you get there. So that's just my few pointers.
Councilmember Gaby, uh, having been on the interstate transit authority board for a long time, I would say that there's probably more ridership than non-riders be aware of. And so we could probably get, uh, uh, numbers of what ridership is for Route thirteen and, you, uh, you know, and also COVID is on, on vision. But it also has free fare. Eyes across the street from a senior center. And so it, I, we could certainly get data for Route thirteen.
Okay. Uh, on that note, I think we need a map of what, of where those buses drive from and to. Cause if my, if my observation serves me right, there's a bus line that drives on a Henderson, uh, on the other side, uh, of Henderson, but not side of Henderson. That bus is always very empty. Whenever I sit at that, uh, piece of place, it's always very empty. So I don't know where that bus is coming from, but it's always very empty. And sometimes there's not, there's nobody in it. Maybe one or two. I mean, if it's, if you say full, one or two passengers. So I don't know about the rest. Maybe we, maybe we need a map of where those buses, uh, come from and, and what the ridership is like.
And that information's available. I can get that information to you. Councilmember Dahlhoff?
Thank you, Mayor. I love this discussion, right? I appreciate Joan's comments. Yes, all valid, right? And things we need to address at some point. Like at some point, we need to figure out what we do with aquifers and preserve, preserving and protecting and how we define that, right? Moving forward. And I'm, yes, and I'm still stuck on the future, building for today and the future with the funding we have available, right? And the size and the space and connection. Right? So I'm thinking, I dig the DOT site, access intercity transit. I can't catch a bus there. Right? So again, who are we tailoring? They're urban, right? I get it. I get it. I get it. I get it. And how do we then also identify the more rural areas who don't have access, right? How do we build for the future and meeting the needs today? I get it. So I'm kind of with Councilmember Von Holtz. Like I would like more input from the community, however that looks like, taking the data from the other location sites and extrapolating it, something in a walkthrough to better visualize it, right? I think we have two opportunities that we really need to discuss more. And so with that, I mean, I would like to hear from Chuck Denny, right? Chuck Denny's been involved in this. Chuck Denny loves Tom Water. Chuck Denny lives in Tom Water. I'd like to hear from Chuck.
Unfortunately, he's not here this evening, so we'll have to get back to on that.
I mean, I see him on the call. He's a participant unless someone else. Do we have two Chuck Dennys?
So Chuck, Chuck was traveling and his flight got delayed. I did see him jump on. He's on his phone, I believe. So I don't know. He's probably driving back from C-Tech right now. Um, I think that, um, you know, Chuck has been working very directly with our consulting team and um, can answer any questions that you have about the criteria, about the process. And I'm sure that he would be happy to, um, meet with you. And I, I think, um,
Yeah, before we vote, thank you, Minister Perch, before we, I make a decision, I, I just want to hear from Chuck. So thank you.
He, he's listening, but he's driving.
Yes.
I, I, I can speak a little bit for Chuck. Um, I've been involved in these meetings and I've been at post sites. There's positives to both. Uh, I think the question he, we would have too is, you know, when can we build on this site? That's a big, big question. Uh, the, the Wash Dot site. The other site, it's, it's twenty four acres. So that, that leaves a lot of opportunities for other things than just a community center. Also, it's right next to Bush and us, which on program side, that, that's huge. You, you got two gyms that you could use if you did a tournament. It's right on I five. So that, that's a benefit too. But, uh, I think the, the size of the sites are, you know, this is about nine acres. Out at Bush, Bush Prairie, it's twenty four. So there's, there's more room to expand. Uh, we could do more outdoor space, parks, we do, we could have our camps there, uh, movie nights, that kind of stuff. More growth up. But I think, yeah, this one, the concern is, when could we build? Or what's there? What the cleanup would be and there's more, you know, bigger space out.
Right. Councilmember Von Holtz?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I was just thinking, um, when Michael was doing this beautiful description of, you know, entering Tom Water proper and, and seeing this beautiful recreation center. And then I, I realized that right next to the DOT site is, uh, weed store is, is, I know that there are some ordinances around, um, these types of, um, businesses near schools. Would that be a concern for the, this site, um, being so close to a marijuana, marijuana store?
Yeah, that's a great question. We'd have to look into it. I know typically the, the site distance obligation is one for the store itself. And I don't know what happens to a store when something new that, it's only certain types of uses that, that they have to be a certain distance from under the state law, I believe. Um, so I'm not sure. I'd have to ask Brad, uh, and, uh, the community development staff, what would, what would happen if a new public use that, um, a, a marijuana store was required to be distanced from or to locate in its vicinity. Um, I don't know that there would, I, I, it, I don't believe there would be a prohibition on the new, the new public use, but I definitely would, uh, would check with. Um, that's something we can absolutely find out from, uh, from community development staff. And I just want to, um, uh, say, I feel like, uh, Councilmember Von Holtz, um, suggestion for, um, a tour of both sites and, um, but to, and, and testing these two alternatives um, with the community is not a bad idea. Um, I think it's a great idea, actually. And I think what it would take would likely be a scope amendment from, uh, from BRS order to add that, uh, into the, into the fray. Um, but it, but we have one opportunity to spend multiple millions of dollars um, on behalf of the Metropolitan Parks District. And, and honestly, we need to do a financial analysis, uh, because forty million dollars is three million dollars just in debt service every year. And I'm not sure that we actually bring in three million dollars of, of revenue in the MPD every year. So that's an analysis that we still have to do. And I think we could be doing a concurrent, um, financial analysis and reaching back out to the community and testing, testing these two alternatives in particular, um, and, um, and get some better information for you all, uh, before we ask you to make a specific decision. Uh, we were hoping to get direction, not necessarily a definitive decision, because you don't take action at, at a work session. But really for, for BRS to go any further, really with any kind of design, um, and, and even to this degree that they can do further analysis with respect to costs and, um, sites. Um, you know, the, the requirements of each site, um, they really needed to have more, um, more data and, or more direction on which site. If, if it takes more, um, more, uh, input from the community to get to that point, then we just, we, we get a, a scope amendment and we take our time to do that. But this, this is a big investment and it needs to, we need to ensure, you need to ensure that you understand and are committed and, and, um, feel like you as a, as a council are making the, the best choice and the best decision. And we're not going to rush you into that. So I thank you, Councilmember Von Holtz, for a really great suggestion.
Councilmember Kathy, I think somebody else had their hand up. Is that you, Councilmember Dahlhoff? Okay, Councilmember Kathy?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, I just want to say quickly that I agree with Councilmember Dahlhoff about the future. And, you know, Tom Water moving that direction, that, uh, al- albeit slowly, I don't think, I don't think we're racing to development out there. Um, and if it works out, the opportunity for us to have something more central. And then as development happens, we, we could build an annex. We could build, uh, uh, the pool. We could do a variety of things in the south end. I mean, probably this piece of property may or may not still be available, but we, we could, we could do it. I'm, I'm just thinking about not letting, um, you know, an opportunity go, uh, uh, and because we have future plans. So, um, but, so I agree with both ends of this, uh, of this. And I think that's a discussion we need to have. We need to take care of our, our business and our people now. And we need to plan for them, um, in the future. And that's part of our both challenge and dilemma and, um, and joy, really. We, we have opportunity to do this. So, um, but I do want to protect my water and my trees. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions? Do we have more presentation?
We're just going to do next steps. So I think we kind of have some info to do next steps. Um, so what we were kind of aligning to was, is, uh, Lisa was mentioned. Looking just for some direction, um, but what we will do is kind of work with Lisa, Chuck's team. And kind of plan out another public input session, what that would entail. Um, does it need to test twice? Does it need to test once? Um, because at the beginning of this, we also did the public survey, which a lot of. Um, it's one of the best ones we've seen so far. Um, and one of the questions was kind of the distance they would be willing to travel to a center. So location and stuff was kind of covered in the big questions, and that's how some of these site selections came about. But we will do another retest. Um, we also need to remobilize the landscape architect in our operation consultant, Ballard King. They're the ones who did the market data, so the demographics of Tom Water, they'll be putting together a pro forma, which is operations to run. The facility that comes out of this study. And then also, um, get a third party cost estimator, but we cannot initiate them until we have some direction on site. So we can get cost for the building, which won't change too much from like what we've been projecting. But their big push is, once we get a site, then we can develop it with the landscape architect, and they actually have something. Some sort of plan to price on. So that, next step will kind of be delayed a little bit until we kind of get more in front of the public. For this seventh site option.
I, I, I don't mean to, um, state the obvious if you know this, but. I, the two sites honestly have very different characters. And Tom Water Boulevard, we were, or Capable Boulevard, I'm sorry, we would want to do a much more urban building and use the building. To create sort of a, I'll, I'll call it a wall, but we'd want to maintain the facade along. Along that street and essentially protect the rest of the site from that street and provide rather a noise barrier. Um, the other side is, honestly, it is much more rural right now, it's more park-like. And so I think in that case, the building might be more in the middle of the site with, with parking and outdoor spaces around it. And so, um, I'd love to say, yeah, we can develop a plan that will work on each, but they really demand a different solution. And so trying to be efficient with, with our services for you, we, we'd like to. Really commit to one and, and move on. That said, we understand the need to know more information. I think we've got some, um, good information. We can provide information on bus routes and do some due diligence on groundwater and soils and so forth. And, uh, come back to the, the council in a month or two with that information.
Any other questions? We got our direction then. Thank you both.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Great to see you all again.
We left the rain and cold of Denver to come to the warm sunshine of Washington State.
Agenda items, so perfect thing.
Yeah, we can, um, so Chuck, we'll, we'll get with you, uh, there was a suggestion to, uh, get to a little bit of. Uh, public input on, get some public input on the two sites. So we'll, we can talk about, uh, scope change to accommodate some additional, a little bit of additional work. Uh, to occur over the next month, two months, um, and, uh, we can, uh, um. Check in, and, um, this is recorded, so you'll be able to hear it all.
I was able to listen in and all, so it's great, great points.
You did, yeah, okay.
So we won't make you sit through our, right, our next item. Uh, so we're now going to strategic planning session, uh, of the review.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Thank you, thank you.
So, um, I will, um, tell you that this is going to be very short. Um, and I'm sure you're glad to hear that, because we're at seven thirty. Um, so, thank you. So we are, um, we had a good session on Saturday, I think, uh, if the, those who were there would. Offer a different opinion, please, please jump in. Um, the goal on Saturday was to essentially establish and affirm a process to allow us to operationalize the strategic plan. And to, um, uh, really put into place a structure that allows us to honor the, the direction. And the priorities that are established by the council in, in the, in the strategic plan. We talked about the different roles, uh, that different groups in, uh, the strategic planning process have. Um, we emphasize that really the community is our, our star, uh, the council, uh, helps us. Uh, with the why and the what, we talked about the why, the what and the how is for the framework to, um. Graphically distinguish between the roles, and then staff comes in and, and, um, and helps that, um, provide the how. Um, that is established, um, that, that gets the work done and accomplishes the why and the what. Um, based on the council's, uh, priorities. We, uh, reviewed the updated prioritization criteria that, uh, came from the work session of the council on September ninth. Um, there's some additional changes to make on that. We talked about process and timelines, both for annually, how we keep the strategic plan updated and relevant. But then also, what's the process that council members can use as new opportunities come up? Um, how can those be forwarded and incorporated and, um, aligned with the whole council's priorities in terms of. Um, uh, adding that into, um, our annual work plans. Um, our next steps, um, Brittany is going to be reaching out to council members Dahlhoff and Van Van Holtz to set up a meeting with Amy. Um, we've done this after each of our Saturday session, for those council members who weren't able to be at those Saturday sessions, we just do a. Um, Amy does a, a summary, uh, of the meeting, asks for some basic input review and, and. Um, and it's just intended as a way to get, um, a, a little bit of, um, uh, continuity and, and information out. To those members who were unable to make it. Um, we will have a, um, where staff is continuing to update the document, so even the draft that's in your packet for tonight. Um, it doesn't have, for example, the changes that we made to some of the, some of the text, um, on Saturday, because you got it actually before Saturday. So we're going to continue to update the document, uh, including, uh, completing the work plans, the annual work plans for twenty twenty six. On October fourteenth, that your work session will bring that full, complete draft to you. Um, it will not be graphic, it'll have, it'll be, it'll be the content and the substance of the document, it won't have all the. The nice graphical components to it, but you will actually at that point see a full list of the strategic plan. Um, and then, uh, there is an option that we could, we do have time to potentially review. At another work session on the twenty eighth, if you would like to, um, but from October fourteenth, we are anticipating having. Um, the draft strategic plan on the agenda for both the November third regular business meeting under considerations. And then again, um, at the, uh, November eighteenth regular meeting, um, hopefully with, um, an adoption of the resolution. Adoption of a resolution adopting the, the strategic plan, so, um. That's really all I had for tonight on that topic, and unless there were questions, I'm very appreciative of. Uh, the time and effort that the council members, um, brought, you know, to the, to Saturday session. I thought it was a really good, really good work, uh, session, um, and I'm just grateful for. Um, uh, all of your time, uh, and attention in doing this extra work this year, um, in preparation for. Uh, the next six years, um, so with that, I can answer any questions, otherwise that's all I've got on that.
Any questions? All right, we'll move to Mayor, City Administrator, or, sorry, uh, City Administrator Parks.
Thank you, Mayor, um, uh, three quick things. Um, on Thursday of this week, we have a, an arborist from Todd Prager and Associates. That will be visiting the David, Davis Meeker Berry Oak Tree, we just wanted to make you aware of that. Um, M. Roberts, uh, is the arborist, she's going to be collecting some soil samples and conducting some measurements. And that work is intended to, uh, allow us to better refine the specific work plan to implement the options. To maintain and retain the tree over time. Um, is, um, going to be monitored by our archaeologist, uh, who helped us with the permit. It is being accomplished under the current permit that we have with Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation. Um, and we have our project team, which is, uh, Kelly, uh, Brian Coughlin, our, uh, urban forester and Alyssa. Um, our, um, sustainability manager, um, they will all be on site as well. Um, and so we'll use that work, um, uh, we'll use the information from that work, uh, to help us create the. More specific work plan that will allow us to hire a contractor to perform the ongoing monitoring and, and, um, cabling and those types of things.
Councilmember Kathy?
What, what day are they doing that, uh?
They'll be out there this coming Thursday.
This coming Thursday, okay.
Yes, two days, two days from now.
Thank you. And while I have the microphone, I guess that's correct. Um, I, I wanted to also have you thank all the staff and to thank. You, Lisa and Debbie, for all, all of the work that's gone into this strategic plan. You know, I looked at it again of what we worked on on Saturday and thought, all of this different inputs and, um. You know. The time that people have spent, and it's been a, a full, full staff and council kind of thing. So I just wanted to say again, I appreciate the work on that.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, just another quick note, also on Thursday, um. Uh, there are several sta- staff members who are attending the real estate forum that's being, um, sponsored by the Economic Development Council. Um, they have graciously given us about fifteen minutes on their agenda to be able to, uh, do a presentation. Talking about the planned action E I S process for thebury district area. Um, so we'll be doing a presentation, uh, to that group for, uh, basically is a whole initial. You know, public unveiling of, of what that process, um, we intend for it to be able to do. Um, and then, um, next week, just as a reminder, is the fifth Tuesday, so we have a little bit of a break, so you have no meetings next week. Um, and so the next time we'll be together will be on October seventh, which will be your first business meeting in October.
Some of us signed up for the walks survey, we're walking with, uh, Alyssa on the, oh wait, what day are we doing that? I'm, yeah, we're doing that, the walk audit on the thirtieth, yes.
Yes.
Yes, yep. Yep.
Yeah, well, we, we want to know who that is, because if there are, if there are four or more of you, then we'll.
I'm going.
Kind of notice, but, yeah.
Yeah, let Brit, you know, I'm going, so if you want to send out a thing, so, yeah.
Yeah.
We are.
What are they auditing?
Walking, uh, trying to, um, audit places where, uh, we have, where people try to like. Uh, try to go on the bus and different things that keep people from being able to, uh, access our sidewalks and just things we can do to improve our. Accessibility and see where we have places that are already doing well, so.
So you're walking around to see?
We're doing Little Rock Road, I believe, I think we're walking down Little Rock.
There's, there's, yes, I, there's a map, there's a map that's posted, um, Councilmember Kathy, it's basically, they're calling it a walking audit. And it's in re, it's in, um, recognition of the proclamation that we had at our last council meeting where. Well, um, uh, it's, it's a work of a week without driving, a week without driving. Um, so what's it like to get around the city of Tom Water if you aren't able to drive your own car? And it's, uh, intended to identify and demonstrate to people who normally can drive and get where they want to by driving. Um, help them understand what it's like and which area, and show which areas of, uh, Tom Water are particularly challenging. In terms of accessibility for those folks who can't drive.
Okay, so you're out looking for the good news and the bad news?
Always.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bobby.
Thank you, Mayor. So, uh, about Saturday, um, it was, uh, something that, uh, I, uh. When I got home, I was, I don't know, I had this happiness on the bottom of my heart. But then I had disappointment because, uh, we were promised a steak dinner, but that was never delivered, I wonder what happened to the steak dinner.
I didn't realize that, um, that Brittany had promised you a steak dinner.
Well, I think Alyssa just said that went in our agenda, so I don't know if, uh, was that Brittany or was that you, uh, city manager?
That was, I think, uh, you didn't need to sandwiches, so my, my apologies. Kelly.
L-Tech presentations are Monday, so we do need council members to us out.
Did you all hear that from Kelly? Okay.
We said no meetings, I wanted to make sure.
Oh, yeah. No council meetings, sorry. All right, I'm done.
Okay, so, um, I just wanted to, just so that you, since we're not having any more council meetings until, um. Early in October, I just wanted to remind everyone that on the, uh, this coming Saturday, on the twenty seventh, is Fall Fest. At Brewery Park at Tom Water Falls from ten to four. And then, uh, the cleanup drop-off at City Hall will be on October fourth, the following Saturday for nineteen. So, uh, lots of information on our, uh, city website, but, uh, any council members who want to participate. Again, please let Brittany know and keep us informed, and we will certainly have, uh, two busy Saturdays. All right, we do not have any additional, um, agenda items, so with that, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone.